It's the Friday, Thursday, Friday.
There's their Friday.
Seventeenth and eighteenth, okay.
And Nicole, you're doing, that's a list roll-off, by the way. And did you notice the color of the agenda tonight, Julie?
It's white.
Okay.
Original.
Think of a white Christmas. You could be dreaming. Carrie Duhmeyer will be presenting tonight. You're up.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's meeting of Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Roll call as we are all here, and I would ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to approve minutes from last time?
I'd move to approve the November thirteenth, twenty eighteen, school board meeting minutes.
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
And I need to, we need to improve the agenda.
I move to approve the November twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, school board meeting agenda as presented.
I will second it.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
And we will move to celebrations. We have Carrie Duhmeyer here to speak about science.
All right, good evening, guys. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Carrie Duhmeyer, currently kindergarten teacher, but this year I took on a TOESS position, which is a teacher on special assignment, and for our science at the elementary level. So, this year we started a new science curriculum called Mystery Science. And because it's all online, none of the materials come with it. So my first position was to organize and order all of the materials for each of the grade levels for all the different activities. So with each lesson, there's a hands-on activity, which is, has, we've gotten so much positive feedback from teachers and students on those activities. So it's been very good as far as that. A lot of organizing has been the big part of that curriculum. So it is up and running and going, and like I said, there's been a lot of positive feedback. So the main focus on this curriculum is curiosity, which I think goes along well with our growth mindset and staying curious and whatnot. So we currently do not have it in the fifth grade because, there's a couple of things here. With science standards moving towards next-generation science standards, Minnesota's kind of taking off of that and having their own, doing their own set of standards. So Mystery Science is NGSS-aligned. So with that, when it's implemented next year, they'll decide, Minnesota will officially decide by the end of the school year or within, by this time of summer. I think it's about May is what I think the timeline is. It'll be a lot of similarities, but yet Minnesota has different benchmarks and whatnot that they have in there. So it'll be a lot of making sure that the new curriculum we have is aligned then with the one that Minnesota chooses. So that'll be kind of a, a big thing coming up for it. So fifth grade currently, like I said, doesn't have this curriculum because of the MCAs are still Minnesota standards-based. And what they did last year, they added different things to implement with the curriculum they had, and they saw their MCA scores increase last year. So they're continuing, they're continuing to do what they're doing now, and then I'm going to help them with what they need as far as I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow to see what else they need so that we can keep that continuing. So then with this, with the Minnesota standards moving, with them adopting new Minnesota standards next year, the MCAs won't actually change for another two to three years after that. So it'll have to be a gradual release into that, into that fifth grade criteria. So, but it's been great so far. Actually, something that goes along with it, it's called Mystery Doug, and it's a weekly questionnaire from kids. They get to enter questions into this, his name's Doug, and he answers. It's about a five-minute video that everyone can watch and whatnot, and one of our kindergartners has actually got submitted to do one of the questions. So we videotaped him, sent it in, and we're keeping our eyes out for that. So hopefully that'll be up soon, and then everyone will post it everywhere for everyone to vote for it. So that'd be really cool if one of our kindergartners was in it. So that's the curriculum part of it. Another part of my position is the STEM. So right now, my, I'm in my old classroom because there's still, the fifth section of kindergarten got moved to the old STEM room, and my room is now the STEM room, so it kind of, if you walk into it, it looks more like a lab. And so far, we've done a STEM activity for kindergarten first and second, and currently working on the first one for third through fifth grade. So the first STEM activity we did for K-one and two is, just to give you guys an example of kind of what it is, is the biggest thing I learned from a conference is really explaining the why, having that why behind it. Why is the urgency of, why is this important, you know, what do you need to do and why? And the scenario was that there's a family stranded on an island, boat's not coming for another week, and they, they're out of food. So they have a zip line from a nearby mountain, and they have to build a contraption to send down the zip line that's going to land on this island. So I mean, the thought process, we use dry noodles, there was dry noodles all over my classroom, but it's still fun. But the thought process of them, it's spilling everywhere to by the end, being able to keep the food contained, land on the island. It was just neat seeing those kids within that hour, like seeing the thought process and being able to pull different ideas together and really work on that. So that's kind of an example of what we're doing in the STEM room for like the younger kids. And then the older ones, they have a container, and they have this paper house, and there's a flood that's coming from a, in a town with many lakes, which we can relate to, and they have to come up with, they have a budget, and there's a table full of materials, they have to come up with an idea, and then put that idea into place of how to build a barrier around that house and how to not make the house get wet with those two cups of water or whatever it is. So a lot of pulling in that math, pulling in those different ideas. So those are just a couple of examples of the STEM activities that we have going. So since kindergarten first and second did STEM like three activities last year, our goal is to have them doing six this year. And then third through fifth, since this is their first exposure to it, we're going to do three this year with the goal of getting into six next year. So once, once a month, they'll come in and do those different activities. Any questions on STEM stuff?
So how does that, how do the STEM projects, how are they integrated with the, the science curriculum, with the rest of the science curriculum?
To be honest with you, it's not with the, with the curriculum that they're teaching in the classroom.
Okay, so then, so then, you know, they've got a challenge.
Correct.
To save themselves from the flood.
Right.
So what, how do they learn some of the essential knowledge or, or information to, you know?
Correct, so like prior to, prior to them actually starting the activity, the lesson before it, so they have a little mini lesson, was porous versus non-porous materials. So there's like a lesson that goes along with it prior, at the K-one, two, they have, it goes with a literacy book.
Okay.
So there's a story read to them, or there, you know what I mean, so it kind of pulls it all together.
Okay.
So there's a mini lesson that, that ties with it, and then they're use those activities.
And then the, the science curriculum is, is kind of project-based as well?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so just different projects?
Yes, and it's based on the standards then. So it's, right now, it's the next-generation science standards.
Okay.
For the K through four. So then what we'll be doing is, it'll be a little bit of work, but making sure that they're all aligned with that Minnesota then, when Minnesota adopts theirs.
So with, with, with project-based learning like this, you know, is there still a component of blackboard teaching? Or, you know, what is the role of the, you know, the teacher in this, this new type of teaching?
Correct. Um, there, you know, with this new curriculum, it's a lot of the Doug doing that, and then the teacher implements and helps guide all of like the questions and make sure that that application pieces is being doing. Because there's a lot of discussion going on, a lot of higher-level thinking with the questioning of what they have, so teacher's making sure that those are, those things are happening. I know they use a lot of those new CAG and strategies that they've learned with that piece.
And both teachers and students are liking this?
From what I heard. So my goal, my goal now is to meet in December, meet, go to all the PLCs and check in and see how things are going and what they need from me and whatnot. So, yeah. A few more things, if I can go really quick. I'm sorry, I'm taking a lot of time here. Another piece of my job I'm doing is I'm also doing coding. So kindergarten first and second has it on a regular rotation of, once every two weeks, they go in and they do a coding class, and they do a lot of drag and drops. And then third through six does not have anything built into their schedule, so I just offered a coding club for after-school. And I was actually really shocked. I had forty students sign up for it. And it was really interesting because, like, we just had the first meeting last week, and it was really cool. Just their attitudes, they came in, they were ready, they're like, I can't, they're like, when do we get to build our own video games? When do we get to do these things? I'm like, okay. My scenario to them was, you first learn to talk, you then built a sentence, and now you don't stop talking. So first, we need to learn the first steps. So they're very excited, very ready to go with it, so.
That's awesome because they, they will need it. I mean, they need coding, and if they're that young and know that they need coding.
Absolutely.
That's a, that's a good and positive thing.
Yep, and with the coding, we offered it to, it's open to anybody, even those who, we even offered to those who don't have access to internet or computers, we set up different plans to accommodate for that too, so.
Great.
Yeah, so other than that, I've been on the, I'm on the high school PLC with the science modeling. So that's been eye-opening for me as well and kind of see how we can interact. I'll work with Andy Tredo on how we can get five, six, seven, eight really meshed together. So, yeah. You guys have any questions for me as far as?
Questions?
I've been doing.
I just, I do, but I don't know if it's for you or for us, or with the project-based learning, we, we understand that like the lecture and the blackboard time, as you called it, is a real key component. It sounds like they're getting it. I, I just think this is, well, not I, we think this is really positive and a way to go. So thanks and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
With the project-based learning, I've noticed like the lessons themselves take a lot longer because there's so much of that discussion time and that higher-level thinking of doing that, and then with the activity onto it.
Great learning.
They're finding, yeah, it is.
Yeah, good.
And they're taking so much more out of it, so.
Carrie, question regarding your role as, you know, teacher on special assignment.
Yes.
This is great work, and, you know, and so we're trying to think, think of ways to allow the, you know, the staff, the teachers to, you know, explore different ways of, of changing, like project-based learning. And so, you know, would you have been able to, or you think the elementary would have moved as quickly without the time you were given to, you know, to do this work?
Honestly, no. You know, it's, it's been put right in their laps. I've organized it on, said, here you go, and off they go. So that's my opinion, but that's because I've put everything into this.
And a follow-up question is, there are some advocates for math education that say, you know, that, you know, that math education should move away from the blackboard, that there should be discussion and, and project, you know, based learning as well. And so that might be something that, you know, the board needs to consider as far as maybe finding a, a teacher that'd be willing to explore those possibilities.
I know what the, and this isn't my area, but I know a lot of, some of the elementary teachers do like a lot of the number talks and that kind of, that's like the start, a start to it. You know, of getting that, how are you thinking differently and whatnot too? So there are, there is some of it going on, but yeah, you might consider like someone to take the lead in that as well, yeah.
Carrie, I have a question of the forty students that are part of the coding club. What is the gender mix?
It, you know, I didn't do the numbers exactly, but just looking at it, about forty to sixty, forty percent girls, sixty percent boys. Yeah.
And so it's, so the coding's integrated into K through third, or?
K-one, two, into the regular classroom. Yeah, or into the regular schedule. They go on a nine-day rotation, it's set up with their ABC special rotation. And then, because it's not in three, four, five, six, then I offered that after-school one.
So is, is there some discussion about trying to integrate this in the rest of the grades?
I'll pass that over to Michelle. That's not my area.
Well, thank you for letting Carrie have this time. We, we've been working great together and just so excited about what's happening. So the K-two, we figured out, our specialists had some extra time, so I had our specialists learn about coding, and they're the ones. So our PE art, fit and well teachers are the ones that are actually teaching a thirty-minute coding block on that ABC rotation day. So it was using staff we have, just maybe in a different way, and still keeping the blocks of PE and all of that the same. But they had some extra time just because we are five sections in a couple of those classes, there's some extra time in there. So just utilizing staff differently, I think will work, and how we look at it three, six, that's what we keep talking about.
Are you also using primary music?
Yeah, music.
So music, PE, art, and fit and well?
Correct.
And then while you're up, Mrs. Rosen, you want to talk to the board a little bit about, you know, Pam, Pam Brolzma has returned, and she's doing some work with intervention math, also, she's kind of an advocate of the Joe Bowler.
Correct.
Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yep, I can, and that's one thing Carrie and I have talked a lot about, that this is a growth mindset with the science and the math. But Pam has come back to do some math intervention, and during her time off, she read a lot about Joe Bowler and the philosophies. We've worked very hard, K-two, building just a growth mindset across the board. We have a weekly growth mindset message, so our kids are learning what growth mindset is. And now she's going to be able to take that and make it more of a math focus is what she's doing with that growth mindset. Pam's always been a huge supporter of top twenty, of mindfulness, that whole growth mindset, she's done that long, for a long time, and has been a huge supporter, and what she's reading from Joe Bowler is really following right into that top twenty love that she has. She's, she was an advocate to get that here along with her husband Greg for that whole community, and so she's bringing that love into math intervention. So what they'll do is, they will come to her, they'll do some growth mindset thinking, starting the class that way or the intervention that way. Then they're going to go into board math, which is that numbers talk, talking about math, and then working on some foundational practice skills, using some computer-aided assistant programs and things like that. And then also using her skills to look where are they making the errors, and then having that conversation with those students when errors are being made, so they can understand their thinking and correct, correct it.
Okay, very good, exciting.
Yeah, a lot of exciting things at the elementary, and sorry I was late.
It's always, it's always new and, and fun, you know, but, you know, when we can do that fun and new and, and excite everybody too, it is just amazing what, what things we can do within our school. So it's just wonderful, and I thank each one of you for your role in that.
Yeah, Carrie's been fabulous. Thank you for giving me that opportunity this year, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Brown?
First of all, let's take a look at the pink sheet, the school board meeting calendar. On Thursday, the twenty-ninth of this week, there'll be a high school student breakfast in the high school commons. That'll be at seven-thirty in the morning. And then looking ahead at Tuesday, December eleventh, that's when our next school board meeting, we'll only have one school board meeting in December, and that's going to be a special board meeting, and that will also, following the board meeting, we're going to have a, a, a school tax levy hearing. And just to recall, we're not raising taxes at all for next year, but it's still an opportunity for the public to come. And Bradley Carlton will be presenting that at the six o'clock public hearing on December eleventh. And then following that, there will be another public hearing that will approve tonight. The Great Plains Transportation Company here in town is looking at doing a building expansion, and they're requesting a property tax abatement. And in order to qualify for that, the city, the county, and the school district have to approve that. And that would be something that we can talk about at that meeting, and I'm.
Do you know a little bit more about what this expansion would include, or is this?
I do.
Is this a teaser?
No, no, this is, we actually have the detail of this, they would save about two-hundred thousand dollars in property taxes over ten years. It's an expansion of their facility, they'll add approximately, is it eight or ten new jobs? They're a dispatching group of, for transportation, and, and they want to expand their current facility and make it bigger and hire more people. And so I've met with Lindsay Price on this, and she's briefed me pretty well, and we do have the information on that that we'll share. I think we can send that out to everybody after this meeting's over. And of course, the beauty of having a tax abatement is that, you know, if, if, if a company comes to town and they build a new building, or like somebody builds a new house, of course, they pay property taxes. And by providing a tax abase, abatement for a company that actually will employ new people, they simply don't pay any additional taxes for a period of ten years. And, and then the city and the county and the school district agree not to tax them, and it doesn't raise anybody else's taxes, it simply doesn't lower them. Because when there's growth in a community and no one raises the rates of property taxes, you would expect your property taxes to go down. By giving an abatement to a company like this, what we're looking for is getting new jobs here in Fairmont and hopefully getting more people to move to town. So I'm always a big fan of tax abatements. I think the last time we did this was when we had the ethanol plants.
I'm trying to remember, did, did we have one for, oh, there, there's been one in between.
Was it Zirke?
The?
Built?
Yeah. The Zirke-built manufacturing expansion.
Yep, I believe that's correct too.
Yep.
Yep, and again, they, in that case, they actually hired twelve of our graduates, you know, so it's, it's always good to get new business to come to town. And so anything we can do to encourage that, I certainly am supportive. Okay, oh, enrollment, real quick, we have eight-hundred-and-thirty students at the elementary, down just one student. At the high school, eight-ten at the high school. We're currently serving one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty students, and when you compare that with where, where we were a year ago, we're down about forty-eight students. And if you look, most of those, the, the lower numbers are coming in, the, kind of the kindergarten first, third grade numbers are a little lower. The grades five through twelve are still pretty high in terms of one-thirty, one-forty, so, but one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty students. And then one last thing I'll just mention, I was, did you go to the, Julie, did you have a spec meeting the other night?
Last night.
Okay, so you'll probably talk about the building.
I'm planning on it.
Okay, I won't then, because I just came from a meeting that we were briefed, so I'll turn that over to you. I'm done, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. Financial business, donations, Dan?
Yes, we have three donations to look at. First, in Appendix A-one, I move to introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Larry and Lillian Peterson donated seventy-five dollars for the Fairmont Elementary School elf shop, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Second.
Roll, roll call, Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can we share some more information on that, what day that elf shop is, and if, if folks want to donate to it, what, what they would be?
It's December seventh.
Yeah, it's coming up soon, I know. I've got, I've got a stack of books that I'm going to be donating.
Awesome, thank you. Any of the donations you can drop off at the main office, they're going to start setting it up Thursday and Friday, December seventh, sixth and seventh, and then the tenth is the shopping day for the kids, Monday, the tenth. So then, and we're getting those permission forms right now, or requests that they want their students to shop.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you to the Petersons as well for their donation. We have another in Appendix A-two, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Fairmont Three-M Foundation donated two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars for junior high robotics, be resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call, Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes, yes it does.
And we have another in Appendix A-three, I introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Whereas Kiwanis Early Risers and Fairmont Walmart donated twenty-four headphone sets to Fairmont Elementary, a value of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Second.
Roll call, Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dan. And Julie, financial reports and bills?
Yes, and tonight we have with us Bradley Carlton, our new business manager, and he'll be going over those for us tonight.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight and present a little bit of what we got going on for the last couple of weeks. So you should have in your packet your two documents from our office, the transfers wires. And I'm going to apologize on that because I got this about an hour and a half ago, and there's lacking some description. on that because I got this about an hour and a half ago, and there's lacking some descriptions. But I've been able to track down a couple of items from there that we did receive about $7,000 from the state for our concurrent enrollment program. So that's an aide that always kind of comes to us after the fact and usually heavily prorated. So we do enough stuff that we've earned more money than that, but that's, 7,082 of that is for concurrent enrollment. And we also submitted a reimbursement request for our pathways program, which is scholarships for our preschool program. So that's the second item on there. So I'm going to have to defer the remainder of them. I have some ideas on what our payment to the state might be, but I don't want to say the wrong ones and have that be disseminating false information. So I make a number of payments to the state every month, and I've got three or four ideas on what exactly that one is. So switching over to our payment register, I did have a chance to review these earlier today, so a couple of, a couple of payments stand out off the page. I know when Julie was doing her review, one of the ones she asked was all strings attached there for 12,650. We purchased a quarter-sized string bass and a three-quarter sized string bass for our middle school orchestra programs. So we're growing there and using some of that money that we set aside for that. Other items that jump off the page just a little bit, we've got City of Fairmont there, it's our normal utility bills there for the month. Minnesota Motor Bus, that payment is for our previous months, I'll say the extras, they bill us once a month for the regular contracted routes, and then they sent us a separate bill that includes special ed transportation, preschool transportation, and any extracurricular trips. So this is the extracurricular and special ed and preschool transportation. And then we have Southern Plains for 169,000 on there. That is our second of five payments for our special ed services for the year. So that one's always going to be a big number when that gets paid out, keeping in mind that they employ on our behalf dozens and dozens and dozens of employees. So that number, if it was in our payroll, we wouldn't blink if we were, if those people were working for us full-time. It would just cost us a lot more. So any questions on any of those items or anything that I didn't mention there? Any questions?
No.
Right, and I'll look forward to the next meeting and have the truth and taxation presentation for you.
Okay, thank you.
And you can all take credit for a reduction in our property taxes.
Okay, Julie?
Yes, here it is, I found my agenda. So if there's no other questions or anything, then I would make a motion to unanimously approve the wire transfers for November 9, 2018, and November 20, 2018, a payment of the November 27, 2018 bills.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. We have no old business, and we have some new business. Danielle?
Yes, it is typical for the board to cancel the second board meeting in December. This allows everyone more flexibility around the Christmas holiday. Should an issue arise that requires board action, a special meeting would be called. So I make a motion to approve, to unanimously approve cancelling the December 25 school board meeting. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I appreciate that, not having to meet on Christmas.
Bless you, Danielle.
Dell, pie grants?
Yes, we have in Appendix B, you'll see that our Partners in Education and the Hunt Grant Proposals for the 2018-2019 school year, these have all been funded, and in, with great thanks, we want to thank the Partners in Education, they've contributed $25,000, and the Hunt Grant included $7,400. So I would like to make a motion to approve allocation of the Partners in Education and the Hunt Grants for the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
There's a lot of work being done with that, so thanks to everyone that contributes to that. That's pretty good stuff.
Thanks, Dell. Dan, tax abatement, public hearing?
As Joe spoke about a little bit earlier, Great Plains Transportation Services is looking at an expansion. Their current location is in the Arthur Andrews Building, which is on the corner of 10th and State Street. They plan on building a 12,000 square foot addition, and therefore are requesting a tax abatement from the city, county, and the school district for 10 years. The appendix provides greater detail regarding the abatement request and breakdown of estimated property taxes for the proposed building addition. So to have this abatement, it requires all three public entities to hold a public hearing to discuss the project and the tax implications. We are recommending that the board schedule the public hearing for Tuesday, December 11, following our tax hearing, following our regular board meeting. So I make a motion to approve holding the public hearing on December 11.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We will now move to employment personnel. Nicole?
Yeah, we have, the first item is Principal Ness is recommending that Becky Tao be hired as a medical careers instructor to teach one class daily during period two for the second semester. Becky holds a teaching license in medical careers. I therefore move to approve the employment of Becky Tao as a medical careers instructor for one class period per day, second semester effective January 21, 2019, at a salary of BA, step one.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The second, we have Principal Jim Davison is recommending that Alyssa Roloff be hired as a special education paraprofessional at the high school. She's a graduate of Truman High School and has experience working in the home healthcare field with disabled individuals since 2003. With that, I move to approve the employment of Alyssa Roloff as a special education paraprofessional effective December 3, 2018, at a salary of step one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good, okay. Matt Mahoney, Activities Director, is recommending the employment of the fine arts activities coaches that are listed in Appendix D for the 2018-19 school year. I move to approve that.
Second. Good timing.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we move to board committee reports.
The board met with the sixth grade students, and we had one of our new board members present as well, and it was a good experience. We were, the sixth graders were very open with us. They have some great ideas, they have some concerns that they were very willing to talk to us about, and it was a, it was a good experience. I, one, I mean, from, everything from a volleyball net that was supposed to be replaced and hasn't yet, to wanting to be able to have a foreign language option in school. And they were, they, one student also that I thought was a very good suggestion, has food allergies, and she said that it would be nice in, once she gets to the high school or the junior high, to have a class specifically offered that teaches cooking for students, cooking for people with food allergies. And I think that's a great idea.
That's a great idea. I mean, you know, who would have thought that, you know, there'd be options for, you know, for that? I mean, just, it's just, was just a great idea. I just couldn't believe it.
And they talked to us about their concerns about going to the junior high next year, and so we've relayed those to both Principal Davison and Principal Tradeout, and they're working to make sure that those concerns are addressed. And honestly, those concerns that they have are, for the most part, the concerns that probably existed when we were going from elementary school to junior high, but we just want to make sure that they are aware, that we know that they have concerns. And we hope to be able to meet with them again in the spring to see how the year has gone, and if they felt like their concerns and their ideas have been addressed, and what more we as a board can do to provide a good education for them.
I think it's just wonderful that we meet with these kids and just have those lines of communication, and they know who we are, they know what we do somewhat, but I know I was just amazed that, yeah, the transition to the high school, and I can't remember what it was, but they all had different ideas as to what scared them or what was, but it wasn't like, "I can't go there," you know, I mean, they were just like, "Well, you know, I can deal with this, but you know, this is what I'm concerned about." And each one had a, some were repeats, but I mean, they were just very open with us, and so that's just great that we have those lines of communication open.
Interesting. Thank you, Nicole. Curriculum meeting, Dell?
Well, we talked about a lot of things, and I'll just touch on a few of them. I'll, one of the last things we talked about, we talked about again here tonight, and that's the Joe Bowler method of math instruction, and it's gaining momentum, I think, here locally. And Superintendent Brown is going to find the amount of teachers in Minnesota utilizing those methods, and Principal Tradeout is offering to help, or ask the seventh and eighth grade math teachers about their interest in the method and how they would maybe want to utilize it in the future. There was a lot of discussion on flex time, and we came up with some, some five bullet points about where we're going with that, where there'll be written criteria for the teachers, written criteria for the students, we'll limit the numbers, and there'd be different requirements, all listed and spelled out for that, because it is a work in progress. And we talked too about Tiger Path, and that was something that Superintendent Brown and Andy Tradeout were at Hutchinson's. They're using it in its Business Academy, Human Services Academy, Stream Academy, that acronym would be Science, Technology, Renewables, Engineering, Art, Agriculture, Mathematics, and Manufacturing, and then a Sci-Hi Academy, and they're utilizing this throughout their, their school, and this is relatively new for them.
It is. This is really the first year that they really implemented this, but it took a couple of years to get it going. And so students in grades nine through 12, they actually choose one of these four Tiger Path academies. They're called Tiger Path because Hutchinson is the home of the tigers. And so they have four different unique paths that students select when they first go into high school. And even though they may select a path, like many students when they go to college, they may switch paths throughout their high school career, so they have the option to do that.
And the transition was supposed to be very simple for them. It's supposed to be very, you know, for the kids, if they did decide that this path wasn't what they wanted, they could easily move into another path without a lot of disruption.
And I want to thank the superintendent at Hutchinson, we actually called him out of a meeting, so he would do a conference call with our curriculum committee, and he was very gracious to do that. I'll see him again tomorrow afternoon up in New Ulm. We have a Little Ten meeting that we go to, and the superintendent Hutchinson is part of that group, and so-
You should tell him thanks, because that was impressive. We weren't real confident that he would return that call, and boom, he did, and it's impressive that everybody's so dedicated to their profession that he did that. And it is also impressive that it isn't just us, but others are looking at vocations, and everybody is not the same, and we're trying to offer whatever we possibly can for the interest of the kids and the students here in Fairmont, and we have the right people, we hope to do that. We were looking at a master scheduled task force. Schedules are always fun to look at and to think about, and we're thinking about that, and there'll be a group put together for that. We ultimately want to lower the class sizes, increase electives, reduce the stress level of our teachers and our students, and just better prepare the students for a career and college readiness. So great goals there. And we talked about online school, the language arts teachers. We talked about a lot of things, and we made a lot of progress, and that work is all ongoing. And I've talked too much.
Well, this is the last time we're going to let you talk, though, I guess.
Bless you.
I see a common thread between some of the work that, you know, that Hutchinson schools are doing and what, you know, what our elementary is doing, you know, making school more relevant, more interesting, trying to engage kids, project-based learning, you know, getting kids to think about careers. I think that's the challenge, you know, to make school an exciting place to learn. And I think we, you know, we're making progress, and we have a lot of, still a lot of work to do, but I think we have the energy to pursue it, I think, yes.
This isn't with that, but I know we're getting to the end of our meeting, I just wanted to thank Dell and Danielle. I believe this is probably their last board meeting for their service on the board. It's been wonderful to serve with you both, and thank you for your willingness to do this. You're greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
You're here.
Great experience.
Go for it, Julie. Yeah, of course. Julie, Southern Plains?
Well, yes, last but not least, right? Southern Plains, we met last night, 5 o'clock, with our regular meeting. We did go through the audit, and that was done well, and just very little to any concerns or anything that. I did not bring a copy, so you'll have to, if you need to, you can get a copy from the Southern Plains office. Part of Sarah Middlestat, her presentation, her director's report was spent, a lot of it was on the new program. It, at the, now I can't remember what it was even going to be called, the new Lincoln School. It's not going to be called Lincoln School anymore, but they do have a new name for it. And, but we went through a slideshow as to what was, changes are going to be, the, you know, we didn't, we didn't discuss a lot, but a lot of the colors have already been made, and, you know, just the process will be started. We're going out for our first set of bids here shortly to get things in place. The month of December, I think, will be mostly some abatement of asbestos. And if anybody, Sarah offered anybody that wanted to see the building yet, they would, she would offer anybody to look at it this week, because then next week we'll be starting that abatement, and then they'll be heavy into the construction. And the construction will hopefully be done by October 2019. And so, but it's just, it's just exciting to see the things. And, I mean, we discussed the security, cameras, where the cameras will be placed. I mean, it's just very exciting to see all the changes that will be coming into that building, and it's just wonderful to see that building being used again and back into the community, so. But like I said, if anybody's interested in looking at it, you have something else you wanted to add?
The name, Arise Academy.
Yes, yes, but thank you, yes.
And the symbol is going to be the phoenix.
Yes, that's right.
Kind of a rebirth of kids, yep, Arise Academy.
Thank you.
I thought it sounded like a parochial institution, but that's okay.
Well, the kids came up with it, they had kind of a naming, so it was very, like I said, they put some thought in. There was a couple others, and the mascot, or the, there was an owl, and I don't remember what the other one was, but there was other choices, but they came up with the phoenix, so. Okay, and then otherwise, everything else is pretty much pretty normal, the resignations, terminations, we had some hirings, lane changes. We set student instruction hours for 2019, 2020. In the past, they, everybody kind of, when their district students got there, they got there. And so we're trying to put more of a, for the next year, kind of, this is when school starts, this is when school ends. I mean, we want to be more structured in that. And so that's going to be in place. Sarah did talk to all the busing and the superintendents and that, and we'll be getting that down so that, like I said, school will start at this time and be out at this time. None of this coming and going as much as what they had in the past, so. I was really excited to hear that. We had building permit fees, we just, we made, passed on that, a staff development grant, assurance of compliance for the Department of Education, approved the seniority list, talked about the revised budget, and then also committed for the fund balance, what we need to have put in place so that we can continue to pay our bills. And then also approved the contract with Sterling Systems for asbestos abatement. So that'll be in place. And then our next meeting will be Thursday, December 20, at 5 o'clock, so. I don't know if there was anything else, Superintendent Brown, that you wanted to bring, I know you wanted to talk about it, I don't know if there was anything else you wanted to talk about with the meeting?
No, I think you covered it very well, and we had a superintendent's meeting this afternoon with-
this afternoon with Dr. Middlestad and she went through the schematics and, and I'm just, I'm so pleased that Lincoln School is going to be reborn. It's a great facility and, and they've done a lot of great work and I want to thank the whole staff for all the work they've done and you serving on the board. I just want to add one more thing, I think you mentioned busing. You may hear on the news tonight, Minnesota Motor Bus had a major fire in their bus garage in Marshall. It's not here, but Minnesota Motor Bus is the same company that serves our school district and so our thoughts are with them. The buses were actually out on routes at the time, and, but if you, if you look at the video online, later on you'll see it was, it's a major fire and I think they lost their entire bus garage and they have a huge fleet of buses.
Well, at least they didn't have the buses too, I mean, it could have happened and lost all them too, and then what do we do for transportation for the kids and?
Right, and we want to thank them, they were so gracious, they provided multiple buses, extra buses for us, because we had the entire city limits of, of our school district that I think we're at the-
Tended the football games.
Tended the football game last Saturday up at the Vikings Stadium and so, congratulations on our football program, what a great job, I talked to Coach Mahoney a little bit today. Now I get the Rochester Post Bulletin, is one of the newspapers I get, and all last week I was reading about number twenty-two and twenty-nine for Rochester, and they were their two running backs, and boy, that newspaper was correct. They had some horses, but our team did, our team did very well and our band was superb. It was so great to have our marching band, they didn't march, of course, but our marching band and our cheerleaders did a great job. We really travel well, you know, when our community, when we have a major event like that, our community really travels well, thousands of people showed up, so, very good.
Very exciting.
Thank you all.
Okay.
I think that's the end of the agenda.
Move to adjourn.
Dell?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are done.